Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of Walpole Select Board. As we always do, let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight is to vote on the open meeting law complaint review, discussion, and response to the January 21st, 2020, open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. David Salvatore concerning the form of the board's January 7th, 2019, meeting notice with respect to a December 30th, 2019, open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Christopher McKenzie. So Ben, if I could turn to you and take us through that?
All right, so for the sake of clarity and to ensure, and we said this the other night, but to ensure that all the relevant information is memorialized appropriately, that everything is in one place that can be appended to the minutes, we'll condense it into two motions. First, to the extent that Mr. Salvatore's complaint raises concern about the prior meeting notice, I would ask, based upon the statements made, in fact summarized, for a motion to ratify, validate, and confirm the board's January 7th, 2020 vote to resolve the December 30th, 2020, open meeting law complaint by authorizing Town Council to file a response with the Attorney General indicating that the vast majority of the matters raised related to meetings held more than 30 days prior to the date of the complaint, and further that other meetings did not raise issues under the open meeting law, and that the following action be taken: add the minutes of the January 7th, 2020, meeting to the minutes of the current meeting, including Mr. Salvatore's written notes; add the board's response to the December 30th, 2019, complaint filed with the Attorney General to the minutes of the current meeting as well.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
Second, with respect to Mr. Salvatore's complaint, I would ask for a motion to direct Council to prepare a response consistent with the summary of the matter provided, deny that a violation of the open meeting law occurred based upon the particular facts at issue, and that the following action be taken to promote transparency and further the purposes of the open meeting law. First, request that the town clerk work with Town Council to prepare a "best practices" end quote summary for the preparation of meeting agendas, and, two, consistent with past practice, schedule and hold an open meeting law training for staff, boards, and committees.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
3-0-0.
Can I just clarify one other thing?
Yeah, go right ahead, Ben.
So those motions, the referenced minutes, and the other information that was contained in there will be appended to the meetings for, or, excuse me, will be appended to the meeting minutes for this meeting. So it'll all be together in one place, so if you're looking for it, that's where it's going to be.
Great. Okay, anything else, Ben?
No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So next up, we have a vote toward the MSBA OPM contract to Compass. Jim, you want to just briefly touch on that?
Sure, with the pleasure, I present this to the board. About two weeks ago, we went into Boston, myself, superintendent, members of the school committee, the building committee, Patrick. They voted to affirm the town's decision to award the contract to Compass Project Management, so they're asking that the Board of Selectmen vote to formally move forward with this, and we needed to get it done because it's due towards the end of next week, so that's why I couldn't wait to the next agenda.
Great, okay. Mark?
I'll make a motion to award the MSBA OPM contract to Compass.
I'll second that.
Further discussion being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
3-0-0. Okay, mixed up, we've got vote and sign the absentee ballot voting, early voting policies as requested by the town clerk. I saw Liz come in, just saw, there she is. Hi, Liz.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You want to come up and just talk to us about this request?
Liz Gaffey, town clerk, voting is not familiar? So we're having early voting a couple of times this year, if not three. So the first one is February 24th to the 28th. It'll be five days of early voting, and we're going to do it here at the town hall. We'll probably, we'll probably, we're definitely having 10, I'll probably do 11 for the presidential the last two weeks of October running into the election. So because the Board of Selectmen don't have this as a designated polling place, what I'm trying to do is cross the Ts and dot the Is, that there's no election earring signs up, because I don't have 150-foot barrier, because the election, early voting works different than a regular election day. You know, I'm not required to have a constable or a policeman there to make sure that it goes right, so because it's a little bit more relaxed, I just don't need people right up on the people who want to early vote. So I spoke to the, I had a meeting with the Board of Registros, and we wanted to see if this policy could go in place. They, you know, 4-0-0 for the policy, which is no political signs or attempts at political persuasion are permitted on the town hall property located at 135 School Street. In addition, no political signs or attempts at political persuasion are permitted on any other municipal building property during the period that is used for early voting. So this way, we shouldn't have anything on any town property. If you guys are in favor of the, because they do absentee ballot, too, at my counter, as well as early vote in the main meeting room. So if we could get that policy in place, so when someone says, "Who said I can't do that?", I've got, I've got a document that was signed by both the Board of Registros and the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, makes total sense to me, Liz, so thanks for bringing that forward. Any questions for Liz?
No.
Want to entertain a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to sign the absentee ballot voting, early voting policy document from the town clerk.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
3-0-0. Liz, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the board listening to that. Thank you.
Of course, anytime. Okay, so that moves us on to our final piece of business for the evening, although it will be, no doubt, a lengthy one, which is a discussion on the inclusionary zoning bylaw and housing trust articles, which are Articles 21 and 22 on the upcoming warrant. The Board of Selectmen is sponsoring both of these articles, and as such, we felt it incumbent to have some sessions where we talk in detail around what's in the various articles and what is being proposed, and make sure that, first of all, we understand what's being proposed, and have an opportunity to ask our questions and dig in as the sponsor for the article, that's our duty. But it also, I think, gives us an opportunity to entertain questions from others, as these are complex articles and require two-thirds vote on the floor of town meeting, it makes a lot of sense to have as much dialogue upfront as we possibly can. My hope is that in the process of doing this, we will be able to separate fact from fiction and eliminate any of the concerns that might be raised and addressed, and make sure that people know what the real facts are, so that when it comes time to actually vote, people are voting based on fact, not fear. So we've got Andrew Flowers here from the Housing Committee, and I think, Andrew, you're gonna, you're gonna lead the conversation, maybe jointly with Ben, and I think what we'd like to do is literally just step through the article. Now, you guys have been in a bunch of forums, you've heard questions, and I think you probably know the hotspots in the, in the articles, so it would be helpful, to me, anyway, to go kind of top to bottom through it and hit those hotspots and allow us to ask questions as, as we go, okay?
Yeah.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think that's great.
Then, okay.
Yeah, why don't, yeah, please, please come up. Why don't you want to sit here? Sit over here, so you don't get backed everywhere. So Ashley Clark, our Economic Development Director?
Community.
Community Development Director, sorry, I'm sorry, Ashley, who has helped to craft this along with the Walpole Housing Partnership. And also Courtney Starling, who was a consultant, who helped us out with a lot of the work. Courtney is not here tonight, but she helped with a lot of the drafting and the language. It is a lot of legalese, it does get very technical, so to the extent that we could have Ashley and Courtney, their input on it was hugely helpful, and we can get into that a little bit further tonight. Andrew, was there anything you wanted to say as the Chair of the WHP before we get started?
No, just happy to be here to answer questions. We can start with a quick overview of the two articles, or we can just jump right in and go, you know, section by section, and I just want to reiterate the great work that Ashley Clark has done along with our, our housing consultant, Courtney Starling, and I will be relying a lot on Ashley as well to answer the technical questions here, but happy to proceed as you see fit, Chair.
So I think starting with an overview is always helpful, so if you could just sort of set the broad stage for us, and then we'll step on through it. The other thing I wanted to point out is, you know, we've got people here in the room with us, no doubt there are some people here who have points of view, in fact, I know they have points of view, and probably have some questions, and so what I'd like to do is, as we go through it, I don't want to wait till the end to do the Q and A thing, but I really like to do is, if we can just do this in a way that doesn't derail the discussion, what I'd like to do is entertain questions as we go through it from everybody. So what we'll do is, we'll hit a section, let's let the board ask its questions first, and then open it up to others who may have questions. Here's what I'd ask, this isn't a time for, you know, politicking and, you know, speeches and things like that, it's all about, you know, the mechanics of the article. So if I could ask people to stay right to the mechanics of the article and say, you know, like, "I don't understand what this means, what does it mean?", or, "I don't understand what the implications of this are, can you explain the implications to me?", that would be my preference, if we could kind of keep the dialogue at that level, because that way, well, as I said, we'll get to the facts, okay? So what we'll do is, is as we go through it, we'll do the question thing, if people have questions, just raise your hand, and I'll acknowledge you, and you can ask the question, okay? All right, good.
Does everybody have a copy of this? Everybody do this here? Here, we've got a couple. There's extras up here, if anybody wants them. Go ahead, Andrew.
I'll begin with a quick minute and a half, two-minute overview, and then we'll work with Ben and Ashley to dive into the details.
Awesome.
So the overarching theme here, the problem we're trying to fix is that Walpole is booming with development, but affordable housing is scarce. And the Housing Partnership Committee, of which I'm the Chair, Ben Barrett, Phil Zacharowski, I think are the only other members here tonight, we've been working with the Select Board, the Planning Board, and as I said, with Ashley Clark, to craft an inclusionary zoning bylaw and a housing trust article. So these are Articles 21 and 22 on the Spring Town Meeting warrant, and I just want to walk through briefly what they do. So Article 21, the inclusionary zoning bylaw, it requires larger-scale developments of six or more units to include some affordable housing units as part of their market rate housing, in one sentence, and we can get into why that's the case. Article 22 creates a housing trust to promote more affordable housing. Now, I'll just spend just a second here to highlight why lack of affordable housing is a problem in Walpole. About 30% of Walpole homeowners and 60% of Walpole renters spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Affordable housing, let's just define this real quick, and many of you have maybe heard me give this definition a lot, but I think it's important context for everyone. Affordable housing is housing which costs no more than 30% of the income for a household at or below 80% of the area median income. So for places in the Boston metro area, which includes Walpole, that refers to a family of four on an annual income of about $81,000. That's the kind of go-to example I give. So this is affordable housing, in other words, that's built by the private sector and costs that much. So what is the purpose of an inclusionary zoning bylaw? An IZB, I'm going to call it IZB for short. It's to maintain or grow Walpole's share of affordable housing. And something I want to really stress here is two points. One, it's affordable housing that is done within the town's existing zoning bylaws. We would change the bylaws to have this inclusionary zoning requirement, but for instance, where you can build multifamily housing would not change. It would still be in the same zones that multifamily housing is allowed currently. The second point I want to stress is how common IZBs are. More than half of Massachusetts cities and towns, more than half, have some form of inclusionary zoning. To dive into the details just for a second, and then we're going to get into it later, the way it works is, for units that are six, for developments that are six to 12 units, 10% would be required to be affordable. For 13 to 20 units, 12 and 1/2% would be required to be affordable, and for more than 20 units, 15% would be required to be affordable. Now, there are lots of other details here we'll get into later about parking and lot size reductions, or what I would call density bonuses that make this work in terms of the economics of it, in terms of working with developers, make it financially sound. We can get into that later, but that's the basics of what an IZB is. And real quickly, Article 22, a housing trust. Now, this article would create a housing trust which would receive funds. Typically, it would receive funds from payments in lieu. Now, payments in lieu is a flexible tool that allows developers who have to have some inclusionary zoning through that first article to instead make a payment and just build market rate housing. And that, that payment would go to the housing trust. Now, the purpose of the housing trust is to create a board that's supervised very closely by the Select Board of town residents, and it would essentially facilitate the promotion of developing affordable housing using that trust money. There are other sources of funds besides payment in lieu that can fund a housing trust, but what a trust can do is provide financial support for constructing affordable homes in conjunction with private developers. That's one example. Another is, it could help rehabilitate, rehabilitate existing affordable housing in town, like, for instance, through the Walpole Housing Authority. So that's the gist of what a housing trust is, and we can get into the details, but I just wanted to kind of set the table. I hope that's helpful, and we can jump in now to the technical specifics.
You know, I think that was really helpful, so thank you for taking us through that as a, as a level set, okay? So we'll dive into Article 21 at this point and kind of just go through it. So who's going to lead us through that?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent that there's any questions, I guess if we just start with Section 5i, inclusionary zoning, it gives the purpose, which is what Andrew just described, and then it goes on to offer definitions for all of these individual items that are, and the terms that are used later on to avail yourself of those meetings, so that we know in some of this more dense and technical language what we are referencing, or what the town will be referencing when it references a SHI or qualified purchaser, for example. Section 3 of the applicability, it does just what it describes, sets forth the parameters for applicability, special permit required, and mandatory provision of affordable units. I know Item 5 under there is something that a lot of people have questions on, Andrew touched on that as well, that the size of residential development requiring, or to meet this requirement would start at six. And so this simple table is something that, or I should say, the simplicity of this table belies the work and effort and discussion that went into it, insofar as, you know, the WHP, and certainly with Ashley and Courtney's help, looked at other towns, the rates, the percentage of affordable housing units required, the size of residential development is required to find the sweet spot for Walpole that would allow for, you know, development to continue and be a reasonable business practice while ensuring that the town isn't taken advantage of, from the terms of affordable housing. Both our, you know, moral obligation to provide affordable housing, but also our obligation under the law with the state to meet the 10% of total units. So a lot of time and effort went into it, research of not only other towns, but also models, you know, using different business models to say, and what's the term, penciling? Is that what she?
Pro forma.
Pro forma, well, pro forma's more technical, but also penciling in, you know, what developers would use, what they're looking at, what the profits are, to find it. So again, a lot of research and a lot of expert opinion went into making that chart. Section 6, then, is the special provisions for affordable housing units, and it steps through some of the math and calculations that are utilized, and, oh, I guess I have, do I have two of the same here? And we get into the parking requirements, the density requirements, and some of the other sections which describe from a technical perspective. I mean, I think that's a good place to pause for a second, to see if there are any questions or, you know, Jim, Mark, or whomever, if anybody would like to, would like Ashley or myself to step through those, explain any of it. Essentially, what it does, and Andrew jump in and correct me, or Ashley as well, jump in, but what we want to do is, the way the system is right now, there's no, and we talked about this a little bit at the, at the EDC meeting before this, but there's no way to really coordinate with the developers and have a conversation, and, and look at what the town needs, look at what the developer needs, and be able to have a reasonable discussion about that in a professional way. So having these different items, whether it's the percentage of the units, the special provisions for affordable housing units, the parking schedule, the payment in lieu, are all ways in which the town can, can have that communication with the developer. So it really gives a lot of options in those terms, whereas right now, there are no options. It just, they either build market rate, which we've seen, or they build 40Bs, which we've also seen. So that, that really draws a distinction, and I don't want to gloss over the details at all, there's a lot of detail in those items, but that is, that's the general gist of it. Do you have any data?
So maybe I could just ask a couple of questions here to, to sort of get the discussion going. In applicability, Section 3A, it talks about the bylaw applying to any development resulting in a net creation of six or more total dwelling units, whether they're new construction, et cetera, but it also talks about change of existing residential and non-residential space, including mixed use. And one of the, one of the things that I have heard suggested is that this law would allow us to modify existing house lots and split them into smaller pieces for purposes of affordable housing. And so I, and I can't tell if it's this section, there's another section also where some of this is discussed, where you're about the minimum lot size and all that kind of stuff, but I know that's one of the things that is, that is being questioned here. I wonder if we could just spend a little bit of time talking about, you know, the why, you know, the intent of the applicability section and the intent of the, the minimum lot size requirements and that whole calculation. And Ashley, I don't know if you have the right person to talk to that or not.
I don't know either, but I could try.
Okay.
So I've, this is a question I've gotten a lot also, is, "Oh, well, so I have a house, it's on a 40,000-square-foot lot, I could tear it down and I can put four units on it, that sounds great, there's my retirement." But that's, that's not how the actual math works out. So the first thing, I think, to really understand about this, in order to do that, you have to start with a lot that's at least 3.6 acres in order to do the six units. And the way that the affordable unit is calculated is, yes, there's a 75% lot reduction, which when you say that and people see that number, it looks really scary. But the reality is, is that unit is divided out of the total number of the, of the units in that development. So I actually, I did the numbers. So for, like, in Res A, you, for, you would need a 3.6-acre parcel to do the six units. One of the lots, the number would be 7,500 square feet, but then that number would then get divided by, so you would add 150,000 square feet for the other five, add the 7,500, and then divide, so you end up with a parcel that is, why don't I have that number here? Sorry. Do you know it off the top of your head? Here it is, sorry. I have all the other numbers here, except those, divided by six. So the lot size would end up being 26,250 square feet per unit. So you're not going to have a lot that's 7,500 square feet. And what, we did an analysis looking at GIS data of what the existing lots are in the different zoning districts, and what you have is, the average lot size in Res A is 30,203 square feet, and the median is 28,200 square feet. So when your, your lots average out to be 26,250 square feet, you're, you're really close to what the actual existing conditions are. And Andrew mentioned this earlier, that you're not going, you can't have multifamily development in the single-family residential neighborhood. So under IZB, you're not going to have someone tear down their single-family home in Res A and put up a 40-unit building. Does that answer the question?
Let me, let me say, so if, if someone's neighbor has a 3.6-acre lot, and it has an existing residence on it, and it's, and I think this applies across all zones, right? This is across all zones?
Yes, but it acts differently.
By zone, right.
Yeah.
So in the residential zone, I don't know if I got that right, but that's where you'd find a 3.6-acre lot. So is it possible that someone could, could take down the, the house and subdivide the 3.6-acre lot and build an affordable housing development on that 3.6-acre lot?
So there are a lot of other factors that would go into, like, infrastructure, so your roads and this, that, and the other, so it would actually probably have to be a larger parcel than that. But yes, you could do six lots, and one of them would be affordable under the zoning.
Do we have any idea how many lots in the town would qualify?
It's, we've done, we've looked mostly like 10-acre parcels, and I actually just looked specifically at Precinct 8 this morning, and there, there aren't that many parcels, because then you layer on top of that all the land that's protected through some conservation, open lands protection, so the numbers of available lots get even smaller.
So you could see how, how someone who is, is living in an area that has, you know, large lots, and is there, because they, they like large lots and the rural character and all, that you could see how they might be concerned about something next to them that introduces now suddenly six house lots into a, you know, three or four or five-acre space.
So just for context, I'm doing some quick math. If you, under zoning today, you could do six units, divided by 43, 560, so you would need just over four acres. So the difference is about half an acre.
So I think what you just said is, under the existing zoning laws today, given a certain lot size, I, I could subdivide the property and build houses on it today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to just jump in here to kind of piggyback on this conversation. So I think there's two separate issues when people raise these kinds of questions, and they're legitimate questions about, hey, just break it down for me concretely, in my neighborhood, say it's Residential A, this lot next to me is four acres, what can they do should this get passed? There's two things I want to separate. One is the type of structure one could build under an inclusionary zoning, and the other is, how many? Now, the type of structure, and this is something I think Ashley wanted to stress, doesn't change, right? Because right now, you can build multifamily structures, I think only in the GR and the CBD, I think that's...
You can in Res A and Res B.
You cannot build multifamily in Residential A and Residential B zones. That doesn't change under inclusionary zoning. So that's the first part, in terms of the type of housing you can build. Now, if you have a big lot and you want to build single-family homes in a rural district, well, what would the IZB change, relative to what you can do now? And there's this notion, there's this lot size waiver. So just to take a step back to what Ben said earlier, this tool, inclusionary zoning, is to facilitate the increase or maintenance of the share of affordable housing in town, but we want to make it economically viable. So in addition to having these requirements, we give certain waivers that are tools for the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, to grant, to allow the project to pencil, right? And that's that notion of being financially viable. Now, one waiver, the most important of which, I call it a density bonus, and a lot of people say, "You shouldn't say that, because that scares people." We call it, in the minutia of the bylaw, it's called a lot size waiver. So this tool that the ZBA can or cannot grant does reduce the lot size, but what Ashley was saying, and this is why I want to kind of hone in on the second point, in terms of the number of lots, the number of units you can build, doesn't change, it's not that different from existing conditions. So that's a really important point. People think that, like, "Oh, in the rural zone, if we pass this bylaw, people can build, you know, a 20-unit apartment complex." No. Not only can you not build apartments, multifamily developments in the rural zone should this get passed, because it's a type of structure that's not allowed, but furthermore, the lot size reduction, the density bonus, is very modest, and it almost matches existing conditions. And that's, I think, a key point here. So it doesn't change the character and scope of the town of Walpole.
What if you didn't change the, the minimum conditions? What if you left it the same way as it is today? What's the downside of that?
The economic viability of the projects. When you, when you work them through... When, when you, when you work them through, kind of, site acquisition and construction costs and so on and so forth, you're not going to be able to sustain the unit. The, sorry, the affordable unit, the project can't sustain it if you don't provide some bonus.
Okay. Other, other questions?
Yeah, let me ask a follow-on to that same scenario Jim just asked about. We're under 10% right now for affordable housing. I was a little surprised last week when you mentioned, even with the South Walpole 300-unit project, we'll still, will likely still be under 10%. So what could a 40B developer do in that same lot in Residence A?
So I think an example I gave last week was a project that, that I worked on in a different community, that after a year of design review, walked out with, I think, 45 units on half an acre. And what is proposed in, you know, we're talking about, what I said, six units over 3.6 acres. So just the level of density is, it's a whole different thing. And under the IZB, the, the Zoning Board of Appeals has a lot more discretion. They have a lot more, kind of, they're in a better position to say, you need to move that building further away from that single-family home, or we're not going to approve this. Whereas under a 40B situation, we don't really have much wiggle room. I mean, we do the best that we can, but the reality is, is the power dynamics are very different.
Could you just talk a little bit about the percentage? Because, you know, there were some 11.4%, 11.7%, 11.1% numbers thrown around. And, and the reason I think that's important is that, that if it was really, you know, 11.4, there were people, some people saying, we don't need inclusionary zoning, because we're there and time will take us down the road, and, but if we're not going to get to 10%, that changes things, because then we're still at the threat of the 40Bs doing what they've been doing, jamming, you know, 36 units or 32 units, whatever it is, on a small parcel, jamming 300 units on a, it's a good-sized parcel, but it's small for 300 units. So could you just talk about the numbers and how does that math work out? And I know the census for 2020 plays into, into effect, but I think it's important for everybody to sort of get the numbers.
So that's where I get into the chickens and hatching and counting. So it's, it's a, it's a dance that happens. So Burns Avenue was approved, that means we get to add eight units, and that stays on for a year. If a building permit's not pulled, they fall off. And so there's this, you know, what's on the SHI, what's falling off the SHI, but if, if we say Burns Avenue units are included, and we do all 300 units of the Summer Street project, which I can't see all 300 units getting approved. I've never seen a project leave with the same number of units that it came in with. So I said, well, how much would, would that project shrink to not put the town at 10%? And it's something like 10 units, which isn't that, that many. So you asked what the 2010 projection would be with Summer Street and the Burns Ave. We'd be at 10.06%.
With the 2020 census?
With the 2010 census.
Okay, what about when we jump ahead and we have the 2020 census numbers?
So...
And I know we're guessing what that number is, and...
Yeah.
We know there's been growth, and it's hard to estimate what that number is.
So the, the best that I could do to kind of, what data I used, MAPC's projection, population projection data, they do two different kinds. They do what's called a status quo, which anecdotally is not where Walpole's at. I'd say Walpole would qualify for the stronger region numbers, but I took the more conservative approach to say, okay, say we were just doing the status quo, we would be at 9% for the 2020 census.
Okay. And I think that's important for people to get, because I was a little surprised last week when you said we were going to be under 10, just based on having heard other people talk about other numbers. So I, I think that's important for people to frame the issue through that, that we're not going to get to 10% anytime quickly, and we're still going to be at the mercy of the 40Bs.
There are a couple other 40B projects, kind of, in the ether that I've heard about, so if those come in and get approved in the next six months, then we could be, and that's where it gets into that dance of...
And there's rumors of other parcels being sold, or soon to be sold, or for sale, that would be likely, could be likely 40B development, so, okay, thank you.
Nancy, honey?
One quick question. Would we be, though, covered a little bit, because we were working towards the goal and have the active plan?
So...
As far as unfriendlies come?
Yeah, and so there's a couple different ways you can get safe harbor. One of them is, yes, getting to the 10%, and the other is if you are working towards your housing production goals. And for Walpole, that means 45 units or 90 units. So if 90 units are approved, then we have two years where we can, can hang out and say, we don't need to accept any 40Bs. After those two years, and it's kind of, the way that it works out with when the census is going to come down might overlap, kind of, with when those two years come. So we don't know, you know, how long that's going to go, if the census is going to come out first and we'll have an idea, and we still have time under that safe harbor, or if the safe harbor is going to expire and then the census is going to come down. It depends on a lot of factors. But, yeah.
And what happens when the safe harbor expires?
Which one?
So let's say that we are under the 10%, but we've achieved safe harbor.
Okay.
Which I understand is a two-year moratorium essentially on, for the 40Bs. That clock runs out at some point. What happens when that clock runs out?
So the, the way I've described it to some folks is towns that are not at 10%, it's not a secret to developers, there's the equivalent of a beacon of light over your town saying, hey, come, come build here. So as soon as those two years go up, you can expect applications to start coming in.
I just want to elaborate on Nancy's question, which is a really important, great question, because as Ashley said, you can get safe harbor permanently at 10%, or you can get these temporary one- or two-year safe harbors, if you build 45 or 90 units. Well, this is important, not just with respect to Summer Street, which will give us potentially some temporary safe harbor, but it's also an important exercise for town meeting, for you all, to do, thinking, what if we had inclusionary zoning five years ago? So just walk through this with me. We have two big market rate apartment developments going on downtown. Together, it's over 300 units. Well, let's imagine, you know, we could have a time machine, go back five years and IZB is implemented, as it exists right here on, on this page. That 15% of those 300 or so units is about 45 affordable units. That would give us a one-year safe harbor, if we had, if we had IZB. So my point is, even beyond Summer, even if Summer Street never came, inclusionary zoning is important, because it helps you work towards those temporary safe harbors, the kind of intermediary goalpost as you climb towards 10%. It gives you protection from things like Summer Street. So that's why I think, you know, it's important.
Thanks. Let me open it up a little bit. Yeah, I see a hand over here, yeah.
The other thing too with the inclusionary zoning, you may have a safe harbor, but that doesn't stop everybody else from coming in, putting up five units here, 10 units there, with no affordable, which then, when your safe harbor expires, you find out you're actually farther back than you were before the safe harbor. Because now you've added, you know, 10s, 20s, 30s, 40s units with no affordable to it, and you've basically put yourself farther behind the equal.
Yep, that's true. Other, other questions from Joe?
I just have a question on number four, where it says that... ... subject to this bylaw, it requires special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. But why the Zoning Board of Appeals versus planning board?
Do you want me to take that?
Sure.
So when I started in October, I was given a, a different and older draft of this, and it said SPGA. The default SPGA, Special Permit Granting Authority, is the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I always like to try to make things as clear as possible. So instead of just referring to SPGA generally, I said, okay, let's just call it Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's kind of how that started. And then, in kind of talking about this, the ZBA deals with the 40B applications. They deal with the in-law units, and so it just, that's kind of how that, that happened.
But does that answer Joe's question?
Who did you give emotional, sorry?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Joe.
So it said SPGA in an old draft that I got, and the Zoning Board of Appeals is the default SPGA, Special Permit Granting Authority. So I just plugged in, I just called it what it was, but I don't, I don't have strong feelings either way, whether it's Planning Board or ZBA.
Okay, some towns do have Planning Board as their Special Permit Granting Authority. And my concern was that, in the case of maybe subdivision control, you would be adding another entity, being the ZBA, as opposed to, in addition to the Planning Board, because now you have the ZBA involved in this inclusionary zoning, with some powers in section six, which, I think it's six, which seems to replicate the authority of the Planning Board in terms of site plan and review. So in terms of one-stop shopping, it would seem to be that, and I just thought this out, I'm not in favor of either one, but I would like to get some clarification on that, where it would seem to be the Planning Board would be the go-to permitting authority in this case, as opposed to the ZBA. I know we have some ZBA...
Yeah, looking at the chair.
... particularly on that.
Ashley, do you have a view on that?
I, I don't have strong feelings on it. I think that folks have to go to both boards often anyways. Obviously, a developer wouldn't prefer to get to go to one board and call it a day, but, and our ZBA chair is here, and they can probably speak to it more intelligently than I can, but often, applications are going to both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
John, would you want to comment on that?
Ashley's correct. People oftentimes go to both boards, and I think that Joe's, Joe's point is, for one-stop shopping, it makes it easier, but I don't see a problem where they go to the Planning Board for site plan approval, right? I used to be on the Planning Board a long time ago, and then go to the Zoning Board for the inclusionary zoning aspect of it. So I think it, I think that part can work.
Okay.
And it also benefits the town, because you actually have two bullets giving it all the same.
Yeah. Joe, does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I, and I've had that experience before.
Yeah.
But usually, when you watch, when, when you have a ZBA, Planning Board, running a team along with Sewing Water and Conservation also going on, you see oftentimes the same topics, same questions come up.
Yeah.
Both under ZBA and under Planning Board, and I'm wondering how you're going to reconcile that, since you've got some of the authorities of site plan listed in this particular draft. So it almost looks like...
So Joe, do you mean as far as setbacks and side yards and things like that?
And, you know, you may have one board wanting to see, may see it a different way, as opposed to the other board. So it looked to me like it may, that may cause a little bit of confusion, and Nancy wouldn't know, having been on Planning Board as well, but I just wanted to know how we're going to reconcile that in terms of authorities that seem to be implicated.
I mean, my thought would be that it would be much like now, if they're going for a waiver of variance, you know, the site plan's open, and, you know, yes, you're going to have renderings, so you're right, there's going to be probably multiple copies and things like that until they get the variance approved, and then once the variance is approved, then they can show the renderings on all the plans. Because if you are changing and moving around site, side yards and setbacks and stuff like that. But we do do it now.
And one of the things that I have been, as I, as I listen to people, there's this seeming question about, is it properly before the Planning Board or the Zoning Board? And it feels like it's properly before both, is the answer, and for different purposes, of course. And it sounds like Nancy, based on your experience, John, based on yours, Joe, based on yours, that those, those overlapping areas can be reconciled, based on what I just heard Nancy say. Just one second, Phil, I'll come to you, but I just want to make sure we're answering Joe's question.
Yeah, yes, but then the developer is the conduit of the information that comes out of the Zoning Board when they go to the Planning Board, and then they say that the Zoning Board said this, and then the Planning Board may deliberate and come up with a different idea, and then the developer is the conduit of the information going back to the ZBA. So I don't know, it, it can be reconciled, but there can be differences.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Joe. Phil, you've been patiently raising your arm over there, go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, just, just to reiterate, you know, we, most, most of the projects, at least since I've been on the Planning Board, have gone to both the ZBA and the, and the Planning Board. And second, I think there was some, from the Housing Partnership view, there was some sense, right, that, I think you, you touched on it, Ashley, that the, the Zone Board of Appeals already handles those kinds of special, special conditions more than the Planning Board does. That was the, some thinking of that. So, John, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is an observation. A number of the towns that get involved in this type of thing, suburban-type towns, prefer an overlay concept. We designate the areas, it's like an enhancement of the existing zoning. So everybody knows where this type of activity can take place. This, of course, allows people to bundle lots, even in your neighborhood or in North Walpole, wherever, and do this type of thing, which, in the long run, 10 years later, most of us would say, that's a lousy idea, it doesn't fit in, there's all kinds of issues of integrating a whole, a different housing scenario into established neighborhoods. What I, what I think would happen with this type of project is you'll have a lot of people building, if you choose six, which I think is, is very excessive, I think maybe 10 might be a better number to start doing, taking the percentage, but it would be doing a lot of five-unit projects, simply to scope themselves to avoid this, because there's no real incentive to a developer to take Ashley's scenario and do it. And, you know, I don't have the data here to show you, but I could just say that a six-unit project, at a 11% to 12% gross margin, or, excuse me, gross profit, the, to have one unit incentive, a 4,000 square feet incentive of land, really, you're absorbing the profits of three units to build a unit that's being given away. So if four to six are being built from a businessperson's point of view for nothing, no one's going to do that. It's not, it's not going to happen. So, you know, if I'm better off working with the market, with real estate professionals and people, of how, and really, it's kind of interesting to talk about this, because the Zoning Board and the Planning Board really have the metrics that some people call snot zoning, which really cause housing not to be economical or affordable. And you're trying to come at this from two directions, and simply no one's going to play in that sandbox. It's, it's like double jeopardy. The point is, if, within overlay districts, if you were allowed the private sector to relax certain ratios and zoning requirements, they could build the affordable housing in accordance with the market, with the consumer, with the realtors, with the professional people, without government being involved, really, and achieve the same objectives. To place government in the charge of building houses, having a staff supervising all this, telling people what kind of houses... telling people what kind of houses to build, who's in the live where, I mean, to me...
So remember I said no speeches?
Yeah.
So trying to stay in the mechanics of the...
It's not a question. I just think maybe that this is, I'm hoping we are going to be in safe harbor shortly, and you know, I have a little time. I would just say that if there were assurances made by the Board of Selectment and the planning board, that they would not be endeavoring to more zoning changes, after we did the AQV for the woodworkers, the town would not be doing any more zoning changes till we changed, updated the master plan in the zoning book. That's been said a number of times, and now we're turning the zoning book upside down again. So I think it's very unfortunate, it's not the wrong way to go about it.
Yeah. So let me just respond to that, because I don't agree with that. I think when we put the Affordable Housing Committee in place and we got the Housing Production Plan in place, that set in motion a number of things that were clearly articulated in those plans. This is part of that. So that's not accurate.
Right. Well, I guess, I'd just say this too, is that essentially, the term 40B, it's like...
Wait, wait, wait. No. All right. I'm trying to stay in the mechanics of what we got here. You've raised two very interesting questions, which I actually would like to hear a response to. One is the question of an overlay district versus the, sort of the whole town thing that I think you've got going on here. And the second one was the economics, the six houses versus the, I think you said, 10, John. And I just would love to hear some perspective from whomever, Ashley, maybe you or from others, as to, first of all, do we consider the overlay district as an option? And then, what about the economic question that John asked?
I think that, since you were kind of the...
I mean, I'll respond to both, and how about you respond to both? So, two questions from John, one about an overlay district as an alternative to increase affordable housing, and the second about the threshold, the trigger, the number of units under which the IZB starts to take effect. On the first point, you're talking a lot of sense, John, about the need for an overlay district. In the Housing Production Plan that Jim referenced, it's one of, I think, the second or third implementation strategy. I would like to pursue it specifically. For those in the audience, the state provides a 40R smart growth district, which is an overlay district. Several of our neighboring towns have this, and it allows for, to kind of simplify it, denser, you know, incentives to have development in areas near transit, near services, near where you'd want affordable housing. Again, it's in our Housing Production Plan, but the number, it's number two or number three. Number one is inclusionary zoning. Why do we want inclusionary zoning first before an overlay district? Well, frankly, I think a lot of residents of downtown Walpole or even east Walpole feel like they're already seeing a lot of development. They're already feeling like there's a lot of apartments going up downtown or a 40Bs imminent in east Walpole. So to put an overlay district to encourage yet more development in those places, those neighborhoods that are seeing a lot of development, we felt that now was just not the right time, that it was better to take a few years to digest in terms of the infrastructure strain, the new residents of the new apartments. And instead, and this is why inclusionary zoning is number one, have a strategy through IZB that spreads affordable housing as new market rate development is made throughout the whole town, instead of concentrating it in certain areas, especially through 40Bs. 40Bs are the worst example, way worse, again, to go, well, we talked about earlier, in terms of dense requirements. What we have under here, under our lot size reduction, is nothing to reiterate what Ashley said, what 40Bs are. So in other words, I think actually 40R smart growth districts, overlay districts, are a good idea. I just, personally, this is not me speaking for the Housing Partnership, just my own ideas, I don't think it's the right time for Walpole. I think we need a few years. This is a smarter strategy, because it applies to the whole town. So that's my first response. The second response is a great question about, well, at what point do you start to implement an IZB, inclusionary zoning? And this matters economically, right? Because you want the projects to pencil, to pencil. You want them to be financially viable. So when we started this project and we worked with Courtney Starling, the housing consultant, this is key. We considered the experience of neighboring towns. We considered the research, not from one study, that you can cherry pick anything you want, but from a collection of lots of studies in New Jersey, in California, and then here in Massachusetts, the three big states that have inclusionary zoning. And what we found is that for a town like ours, like neighboring Medfield, six was actually at a fine level. Medfield just passed inclusionary zoning, not an overlay district, but inclusionary zoning, that starts at six, like ours, with a housing trust, like we're proposing, and it seems to be working pretty well. So I totally agree with you. You need to do your due diligence. You need to make sure it pencils economically, but we did do that. And when I say earlier that these projects, in terms of their lot size requirements and the economics of it, are actually pretty consistent with existing conditions, that's one tell. That's one tell, that if it's already being done, if it already exists here, it can continually be done in a viable way. But in terms of six versus five and people building under the requirement, frankly, IZB is not about capturing these marginal one extra housing units. It's for the 150 apartment units, right? It's a, like, if someone's building 150 units and the trigger is six, they're not going to suddenly build five. You know, the idea of IZB is to capture with these big apartment or condo developments to capture at least some of those as being affordable. So that's my long-winded response.
So it's interesting, but I want to dig at it a little bit. So in Westwood or other places where they put the IZBs in place, particularly in Westwood, you said they started at six.
Medfield.
Oh, Medfield, I'm sorry, Medfield. Did, have they actually had any successful, you know, build-outs of six-unit developments? The reason I'm asking is because I think John raises a valid point of, there is a break-even here as you build houses. And, you know, do I build five or six? It might be smarter to build five, right? And leave the affordable out. So do we have examples where six actually is a viable number?
So I haven't looked at the exact data from Medfield. I just take for, take the word, you know, take what I hear for granted from our housing consultant, Courtney Starling, who designed a lot of these two bylaws and who did the exact two same bylaws in Medfield. So again, that's my second-hand information. But when I look at the history of our development in this town, you know, working with Dennis Felistic, at 20 years of records of how many units were developed, you see it be very lumpy. There's lots of one- and two-unit projects, there's some in the middle, and then there's the occasional big spike of 20, or, in the case of 40Bs, hundreds of units.
Yeah.
And so it's really those big units that you're really trying to capture. But in terms of the margin, we worked with Courtney and we felt that six was viable economically.
Could I go back to what Mr. Trudell said a minute ago, or 20 minutes ago, around the, you know, the continuous inflow of the fives, you know, and so forth? And does anything that we're doing here encourage the five versus the six? Because it does work against us.
Well, actually, with the formula for minimum lot size, somebody who is thinking of doing six could now do a seventh to help offset the affordable unit that he's now got to incur. Or maybe possibly get an eighth, depending on how the lot plays out.
Exactly.
So you might actually end up with more units, but you're going to get the one affordable, because you've redrawn the footprint that he can work on.
It's not just the lot reduction, there are other waivers to promote good site planning. So it's setbacks, it's buffer, you know, it's a bunch of different things that go into this. So it's not, so you could come in and maybe you wouldn't be able to meet the setback requirements under zoning, but now you can show the ZBA, hey, we've got this project, we think it's great, here's why. We want to preserve this area of wetlands and instead move our buildings over here. So it provides more flexibility for the ZBA and the planning board and their site plan review to say, this project makes sense for Walpole. And if it doesn't, they can deny it.
Okay. Other questions from, yeah, John?
I need to get some clarification, and you just brought up the point, if somebody builds six, six lots, and then the seventh, the quote "affordable" one, they still sell that, is that correct, at a, but not at a market rate, but they still sell it at an affordable price?
That's right.
So affordable in Walpole is probably going to be about three, at least $300,000, I'm thinking. Is it, am I right? What would be an affordable, what would be the cost of an affordable unit?
So just using the numbers that were provided in the PEL application, it's like $250,000 for...
Okay.
For, in the PEL, and those numbers change.
Yeah, it goes up and down. So it's not as if the developer is giving away a house. The developer still gets a quarter of a million dollars, but that house is now an affordable house for as long as it's conditioned.
No, and no, I didn't mean to imply that...
No, I don't think you did.
But I'm just going back to the John break-even question, and, you know, when does it make sense to say, I'll do it or I won't, right?
I think John used the term, give it, you know, giving it away. It's not, I mean, the developer still sells this house, but it's at...
I agree, yeah.
It's at an affordable, it's at an affordable rate.
That's right.
Her land value is 200, so it's 50,000 for the house.
But you're getting more land value because you're able to get a lot that you wouldn't have had in the first place.
But you don't want the lot, you don't want the affordable unit either.
Somebody wants the affordable unit.
Maybe. Somebody from Boston.
Do you...
No.
Oh, you were just stretching?
No reaction.
Okay. Okay. All right. Yeah.
Bob, it's Cheryl from the zoning board as well. Just mechanically, it appears that even if a project complies with zoning, although it respects a multifamily project, what they want to provide some affordable units, that they're still required to get a special permit under this? And I wonder if any thought was given to making it more as of right, there are circumstances in which it would be as of right, not requiring a special permit. For example, you know, if you're entitled to build 10 units of multifamily and you provide the requisite number of affordable units, why the extra stop for the special permit? That's another sort of appeal risk, it's another cost to the developer. It just seems like there might be circumstances in which, you know, you could do it as of right.
Do you want me to take us to have any answering that? So I certainly think that the town could come together and develop a set of guidelines and standards under, you know, under these specific conditions. You can go ahead as of right. But I think that, given the flexibility that's in here and how different each and every site is, I think having a board review it in a public matter is an important part of the process, to make sure that it is appropriate to give a parking waiver, to make sure that it is appropriate to give a setback waiver. That's not to say we couldn't, down the road, develop a list of standards. It says, if you do meet all of the setbacks and you meet all of these things, you could go ahead.
I'm just, I agree if there's waivers involved, and certainly some board needs to exercise some discretion, but if there's no need for a waiver, if they're going to provide the requisite parking, notwithstanding the affordability, so they can meet all setbacks and everything else. It just strikes me as almost a barrier to create an affordable unit as opposed to just letting it proceed as a right. That's just a comment about the mechanics of it.
Also, we need to make sure deed restrictions and all of those get in place too, so just as an aside, but...
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, all of these little items are really valuable, and I think that one thing we can't lose sight of is, and I think maybe Andrew had said it, or somebody said it earlier, that towns do revise this, right? We're not etching this in stone and nobody can ever touch it again. If we find that, hey, there's a lot of applicants that fulfill a certain, that fulfill, say, that requirement, we can always come back and revise it to fix it. So, I mean, it's a living document, we need to treat it that way.
Nancy?
How do you compare this to what Westwood has done and what they have? Did you guys look at Westwood at all? I mean, they were just one of the earliest communities to embrace affordable housing, do it right, get to the 10% and still stay beautiful.
Can you speak to Westwood?
I can't speak to Westwood in detail. I just know from our data gathering with Courtney that they implemented, and this is what John raised earlier, they implemented an overlay district. And their affordable housing requirement corridor was the 10% to 15%, which is what we have. So in that sense, in terms of the percentage required, it's in that, it's similar to ours. But again, it's an overlay district, so it's a different approach. Beyond that, I can't speak to Westwood. That's all I know.
I can say that as of 2017, they were at 10.7%. So it's been able to...
Yeah, they just got to 10% early. They were one of the earliest communities and...
Yeah. And I think having that, if your goal is to get to 10%, this is a proactive way to do it on your own terms, and it looks like it's worked for them. But I can certainly do more research on specific projects if you're interested.
That's okay.
Okay.
So as you have gone to, you know, the various boards and in the other forums, we've had conversations around this, the Article 21, what other objections have come up? Because I really want to make sure that we tackle all the objections and, again, get on a real solid footing in terms of our facts. Yeah, Mr. Trudell?
Quick question. So we pass this inclusionary zoning and say we're at 11%. Does that mean that anybody can come in and put in 10 units without having to comply with this, because we've already met the 10%? Or they still have to come up with their one unit so that we don't drop back down to 9.9?
The second part, yeah.
The second part. So all development, regardless if you're over or not, still has...
Right, which is part of the...
Part of the point, yeah. Well, one of the arguments that was brought up at the Finance Committee meeting was, well, yeah, you have to, once you get over your 10, you no longer have to comply with the zoning law, but the language has been cleaned up and now it's, you still have to comply even though you're over 10%.
And furthermore, you would want to build more affordable housing, so that, you know, as Mark raised earlier, every decennial census, you're going to have to, you know, pay the bill in terms of the new development that's happened the last decade. And we've had a lot of it going into 2020. So you're going to, even if, and Ashley did the numbers, and we are likely not going to be at 10%, but even if we were, you'd still want inclusionary zoning as a way to not fall behind. I mean, ultimately, that's my argument for inclusionary zoning, is it's a way to at least maintain and not fall back our share of affordable housing, as well as, you know, give the town a tool to raise some funds through the housing trust, which we haven't even talked about yet, to actually make some material improvements to, you know, build and improve housing for veterans or for seniors in the WHA or what have you.
Are there any other areas that you guys heard, objections, concerns, any other myths that have been, come out that, you know, I just want to, I want to make sure we tackle them all, because, you know, we're going to, we do need to be on solid footing fact-wise here.
So one that I've gotten and heard is, well, if we get to 11%, why do we need to keep going? I think we've talked about that to some extent. And, you know, I think some folks see the 15% and they see that as a reach. Why is Walpole reaching for 15% when we only need 10? Is a comment that I've heard. And so you do that because it doesn't account for all of the other developments that are happening that are under six units, so that when you get to that next census, which is going to happen in 2030, you've kind of added a little buffer for when those units get counted. So that's one that I want to make clear. And then, what's the other one? Oh, the other one I've heard is, why does this help Walpole? And why should we, why are we providing these units for people who are going to come from all of these different areas? And one thing with that is, you're allowed to request up to 70% local preference, which can include a bunch of different population types. So I think that should be clear. It's not 100%. We don't get to, you know, pick each individual person. It's done through a fair housing marketing thing, so, but we can have some local preference.
And we have that added in already? We wrote that in?
That's just part of, when you're going through, like, the state allows you to do that.
So I'm going to, oh, John, go ahead.
Yeah, it's interesting, the ceiling. I mean, what, I think maybe not this committee or the board, I think a lot of people in town really aren't interested in having 25% to 30% affordable housing in Walpole. It's just part of the culture of the community itself. It's a drastic change.
But we would never get there, John, so you're making something up right now.
Why not have a ceiling on this? It keeps you compliant to, allegedly, most people, I think, would listen to this argument because they want to be in safe harbor, which means they want to be protected from more affordable housing.
I thought we just said 15%.
But in a sense, we've got a mechanism that's going to keep growing the affordable house.
Well, no, right, it's just the math, actually. So, Ashley?
So that you keep pace. The only reason why you're adding 15% units, so say you have 100 units, you have 15 affordable, the only reason why you're getting those 15 affordable units is because you're adding 75 market rate units, and those are both going into your denominator. And then outside of that affordable project, six-unit and greater world, there are all these subdivisions, you know, two units, four units, five units. And at the end of the decade, when they add them all up, if your numbers don't work out to 10%, because you've not accounted for development happening outside of the inclusionary zoning bylaw, you're not going to, you're not going to work, the math's not going to work for you, which is why you have 15% at the higher-level developments, and also, they can sustain more. So you don't require 15% for six units, because that will certainly break the project. It's just how the...
Doesn't make any sense if you're above 10%. You can't, 40Bs can't come in, so you don't have to protect yourself in a 40B.
Well, if other non-40Bs come in, you would, you could fall below the 10%, in which case, you're triggering it. So what we're saying is, you want a buffer.
But actually, Jim, the real estate in town is a zero-sum game. There's very... There's a very limited amount of land left. So it's not, as you keep building those percentages, it's never gonna go back down. If you get to 15, 20, 25%, it's gonna be-
I don't think-
John, you're throwing out numbers that just can't, we can't get to 15%, 20%, 25%. So stop making stuff up. Deal in the reality, John, please.
That was there, but I didn't make up 15%.
You made up 20 and 25%. So 15% on the max on a large project helps neutralize the onesies up through fives. You're gonna end up with a number way below 15%. So don't turn this into an extreme thing by talking about things that can't ever happen. That's disingenuous.
John, we've got a lot of little streets that have three or four houses on them. And those are actually what's going in now around town. You know, so those are the ones that kind of creep in. And those are the properties that was somebody's old home that had a couple acres left. And then they throw in, you know, a little stub and they get the three little houses or three big houses. And then that's what starts bringing our number back down. And because we don't have a lot of land and large tracts, that is what we are building now.
Okay, no, I was saying, but you're taking the money for your social program from those people that had that house.
John, are you dealing with the facts of the article or you're making a political statement?
The town could put up money with it.
Stop, please stop, John. Please stop.
So here's what I'd like to recommend, because I do want to move us on to Article 22. We still got some work to do there. And I don't, I don't, I don't think this is the last time we're gonna be talking about this. But this has been a very good first step on Article 21, from my perspective. Because, you know, I've learned some things, hopefully others have as well. What I'm gonna suggest is, I think that we need to have a straightforward simple story that says, you know, the why. Why are we doing this, right? And it's about the, you know, we've been besieged by the 40Bs. You know, we're trying to get ourselves out of that grinder. The suggestion is that, you know, with the census and perhaps even without the census, we don't get there, even with the 300 units, because the 300 is probably not 300, right? So we've got this gap, that's number one. Number two, to Mr. Dell's point of view, this is something that is gonna go over time and we have to stay ahead of it, as Ashley so clearly points out. That's an important element to this. I also think the fact, because, you know, you sort of opened my eyes a little bit when you talk about what we can currently do under the law. You know, in terms of not so much affordable, but just that anybody could take a 3.6 acre site and subdivide it. Which as I think about it, I did, I obviously knew that, but I wasn't thinking about it that way. And so this isn't really something that's dramatically different. You're changing the lot size a little bit to encourage the affordability question. Because why would someone do it unless you give them a little incentive to do it? So I get that. But do you see the sort of storyline that needs to be built here? We've gotta lay that out so people sort of get the overall strategy that's afoot here and the why. I like to call it the why. I also think it wouldn't be a bad idea to take on some of the, you know, the clear objections that we know will come up and address them in some kind of, you know, a fact sheet of some kind that says, you know, talk about these things, just take them head-on and say, look, this is what people think. Rightly or wrongly, this is what they think. And here's the answer to that, so that we bring more clarity to the conversation. Does that make sense? Good, okay. All right, I'm gonna move us now to Article 22, because we're now at 10 minutes of eight and I don't think we want to spend our entire night here tonight. And there's probably got a fair amount to talk about on Article 22. So how about if we do the, you know, the same sort of thing we just did, you know, sort of quick, high-level, again, recap of why and then we'll go into the details and talk about it, okay?
All right, so Article 22 is specifically for the Affordable Housing Trust, excuse me, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is, I mean, just going down through here, you can have the purpose here, actually, Andrew, did you have like a summary that you wanted to read of it or?
Sure, yeah, I'll repeat a little bit of what I said earlier, but then elaborate as best I can. So the purpose of a housing trust, which is what we're creating here in Article 22, is, originally, it was conceived as a vehicle to receive the funds from the payments in lieu. That you give the developers a flexible option under the inclusionary zoning. But what I've come to learn during this year of education and with help from Ashley and we have Doty Fulgenetti here from the Massachusetts Smart Birth Alliance and others, housing consultants, is that a housing trust is an amazing tool for towns to improve their affordable housing in kind of targeted, specific ways. So here's what you can do. This board, this Walpole Affordable Housing Trust Fund, would be a seven-member board. It would be appointed by the select board. And the trust would have money that is restricted only to facilitating affordable housing. So there is a lot of words here, there's a lot of legalese. I'll be honest with you, it bores the heck out of me if you read it. But essentially, this is mostly, I don't want to say copy and paste, but for the most part, it's copy and paste of state statute. Because state statute highly regulates what trust can and can't do. You can't just spend the money on athletic fields. Or you can't just spend the money on, you know, sewer. You can only do it on select things. So the state law really limits what we can do here. That said, it is, not that it's an autonomous body, but it has a flexible range of options. Examples, you can develop surplus municipal land and buildings. You can preserve properties that have expiring affordability restrictions or deed restrictions. You can rehabilitate existing homes and convert them to affordable housing. But more typically, when we've spoken with other towns that have housing trusts, it's smaller projects, like $40,000 from the trust fund to help the housing authority make some of their units ADA accessible. So that, say, seniors who have disabilities who live in our public housing could actually, you know, get up and down an elevator, things like that. It's very specific targeted programs. So I'll stop there, but one thing I want to emphasize is, I'll stop here, is this board is not a, you know, autonomous body. Not only does the select board appoint the seven members, one of them of which is a select board member, but any expenditure, I want to emphasize this, any expenditure over $15,000 has to be approved by the select board. So it's not like you have free rein and you have your own pot of money and you can do whatever you want with it. Not at all. That said, the purpose is to have a dedicated group of town citizens. And we've included language, thanks to Mr. Maraski and others, and Katie Beatty from the Planning Board, who wanted professional career experience. And so this is in, under Section 29.3. You'll see that you have to have experience in affordable housing, banking, finance, law, architecture, landscape architecture, land use planning, housing advocacy services and other applicable areas of expertise. So in other words, it's explicitly written for the select board to have guidance on appointing an informed group of citizens that has oversight on how they spend their money. But yet they're tasked with being proactive about, okay, as we have funds, how can we put them to the best use to improve affordable housing?
Yep, and I would just, I would add and expand upon a little bit what Andrew said as far as talking about, you know, mass, excuse me, Walpole Housing Authority and making improvements to those buildings. And that's something that's come before the WHP a lot, is about the quality of life that folks in current Walpole housing have. And one thing that having a housing trust, a group with the oversight and conceivably the funds, is that they can go get matching grants. Right now, we have nothing. If we want to spend money on the housing authority, we have to spend it. But if we have it in a trust, we have it designated to this group, and we've heard from other towns, that you can then go get matching grants from the federal government, from the state government. And it allows you so much more leeway in what you're able to do, rather than just coming out of the town's pocket or the town's annual budgets, which I know is difficult. And the other thing I would say is just for people that have this, it's Section 29-4, lists all the powers that Andrew kind of blitzed through and specifically talks about the fact that $15,000 or more shall be required approval from the Board of Selectmen. And then it is 29-11, which is the last section, which describes the annual audit that must take place of the trust. So again, not only is there oversight from the select board, but it's independently audited every year.
Thank you. So one of the questions that I have heard has been that the Affordable Housing Committee would actually be the same group that would run the trust. I think what you're saying here is that's clearly not the case. The Board of Trustees, as delineated in 29-3, clearly lays out how that board would be organized, who would be appointed, what the makeup would be, all that kind of stuff. So that's just one thing I have heard. Let me just ask my fellow members, any questions on this?
I have a question. Out of the 80 communities that have housing trusts, how many of them are, or are any of them CPA communities? Or do they have one or the other?
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer to.
I, we could get that answer pretty easily, but I don't, I haven't looked at that.
Because I mean, my kind of understanding is this, that you created this, they created this because some communities didn't have CPA.
Well, so you create this for a place for the money to go, right? When you get payment in lieu and any of the other terms of the inclusionary zoning bylaw. But yeah, other towns who have CPA, they put their money from CPA in there.
And they don't necessarily need this.
Well, you need the housing trust in order to facilitate the work and to hold the money. You don't need one for the other, but you do need the housing trust as a place to have that money and then spend it. Other towns that we talked to as well actually allocate annual, I don't know what the terminology is, Jim, but annual, you know,
Appropriations.
Appropriations, thank you, annual appropriations. And you can raise a lot of money quickly into your housing fund for use in, like what we described, the housing authority buildings in that way.
So just to piggyback on that and maybe sort of answer Nancy's question, which I don't think I have a full answer to. But an example in the budget would be through free cash, we appropriate some money towards our OPEB, right? Other post-employment benefits. Well, we have a trust fund for OPEB. Just like that, some towns, I'm not saying this town should or, but it could, say, okay, every fall town meeting, if we have the free cash, we can put $10,000, $20,000 in this housing trust fund. And then over the years, you know, you get money and you can, through free cash, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that that's one option. But CPA, to answer Nancy's question, is a common funding source for a lot of these housing trusts. That said, we explicitly took the advice presented by Mr. Maraski and others to strip out any reference to the CPA, the Community Preservation Act, as a kind of, as a way to not cause confusion and make people think that by passing this housing trust, you're also obligating the town to join CPA. We wanted to separate those issues completely. So by passing this, we're not obligated to take CPA funds, join CPA, take the funds. But it is, you're right, it is a common revenue source for a housing trust.
Other questions?
No, I'm pretty good. You know, I was, six weeks, eight weeks ago, I was pretty cold toward the trust idea. But the more I've looked into it and I've done a little reading in other towns and I've sort of come around to the idea that it is a good thing. I've also been learning more about the Walpole Housing Authority. And I know a lot of that, that housing was built with federal grants a long time ago. And it's gotten me thinking about, down the road, you know, the inclusionary zoning hits one piece of the market, if you want to think of it that way. But there's that other piece that we need to continue to think about and figure out, is there anything we can do? And again, whether it's taking some money out of this trust fund to help do some upgrades over there for health and safety and all those kind of things, or find a way. Again, I was asking last week, are there any federal grants out there for housing authority money? And I think the answer right now is no. But we'll have to continue to take a look at that and see if there's something that can be done down the road. So again, not trying to combine these issues, but I've started thinking more about the spectrum of housing and all the different elements. So I've come around to the housing trust, so.
Just for some, like, context, I did a quick look at the last four years or so of building permits that might trigger the pro-rata fee. And for the last four or five years of development, there'd be a total of about $112,000. So we're not talking about a lot of money, we're talking about new roofs, we're talking about accessibility. But I just, for some reason, that number was helpful for me to kind of have an idea of the scale.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions, is what amount are we talking about? So payment in lieu is one aspect of it. What about other ways to get money into the trust? What I want to understand is, what's the likelihood that this is gonna be a million-dollar chunk of money?
Oh, I wish I remember the number from Brookline.
Well, yeah, I mean, it can be, I guess that's exactly the point. And kind of maybe if we step back for a second to a 30,000-foot view and say, what is the IZB in the housing trust articles? It's just a first step, right? There's so many other steps that need to take place to get where we need to be as a town. Creating a housing trust is just the vessel then for which we can collect funds and use them to further the town, whether it's WHA or otherwise. So there's a myriad of options. Town, we described, some towns do CPA, some towns allocate free cash or appropriate free cash. Some towns, the payment in lieu. I mean, there's really a lot of options there, but we can't do any of it unless we set this in place first.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm just trying to get a sense for scale in terms of what's gonna be in it.
But again, yeah, I mean, you know, I think Brookline had, it was in the millions of dollars.
I can't remember, but they've had one set up since the 90s.
Well, but I mean, right, but I mean, sure, sure. But I mean, right, we're talking about scale. So is our goal to have $15 million? No, that's not possible, or is it reasonable?
But- So let's talk about the mechanics of, so money comes in, okay. Now, and there's a whole list of things that we can use the money for in here. It's time to take the money out. What are the mechanics of taking the money out? How do we decide what the proper priorities are? You know, if I think about our capital budget process, because this is akin to a capital budget process, right? I think about our capital budget process, we have a capital budget committee, they go through all kinds of scrutiny, they go through the Federal Income and Board of Selectmen, the town meeting, the whole thing. What are the mechanics that would actually take place so that we could be confident that the proper decisions were being made? So that the money taken out of the trust goes to the places it really ought to go?
So you need an updated housing production plan. Every five years, you need to do that. And in there, you'll have a lot of your goals and your priorities. And then I would imagine, and I don't know that it's, I think it's more of a policy, but the trust would come before you with, here's what we want to do over the next year. And you would work with them on identifying what those priorities are. And then also, any money in excess of $15,000 would be ultimately approved by the select board. So there's another kind of capture of, hey, we want the board that's been elected to represent the town to be really making these bigger decisions. And the $15,000 was put in place-
For essentially to hire an accountant and to be able to do the audits, to keep the books and maybe even, you know, have a quick legal question. Basically, function smoothly without bothering the select board. But any actual, you know, significant expenditure of the trust funds is gonna exceed $15,000. Like, you can't, you know, have a rehabilitate an ADA unit at the public housing for $15,000. So any actual execution would go before the select board.
And what about town meeting? Does town meeting have a role?
No. And I know that's not gonna do me any favors, being blunt and saying that, but that's the whole purpose of this. Because town meeting meets twice a year. And sometimes, let's, I'm just imagining a world-
Water heaters, roofs, windows.
Exactly. Imagine a two-week turnaround time on, a developer comes and says, hey, we're buying this lot. But if you chip in $50,000, we'll build 10 affordable units. Or whatever. Like, I'm just saying, there are timelines that just don't line up with town meeting. And that's why dozens and dozens of towns in Massachusetts have housing trusts to be more nimble and quick. But that said, we wanted to have select board oversight. We heard that loud and clear.
Okay. Let me open it up to the room.
Yeah, page seven in Interested Citizens. Question on the funding mechanism. I heard a few things bounce around me, but I don't see it listed here. Is it gonna be a section for funding, like where the money could come from? I heard CPA, obviously, that's like, that would trade it some people. Taken out, but is that gonna go in here in this document, where the funds could come from? Like, be stated, because I think that's what town meeting is gonna want to know.
I mean, it could come from somebody who just wins the lottery and says, you know what?
Can we put that in here? Like, can we say?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess to that point and what Andrew said is, we didn't want to, well, one, we don't want to limit ourselves, right? But two, the feedback that we got originally when it had, when it said CPA and other items, the feedback we had was people were saying, so it's part of the CPA. And so that's why everything was taken out, just, it's a blank page. And the Board of Selectmen and the people who end up as Board of Trustees, which will be a new group of people, will be the ones, the ones who decide.
Well, the stat I'm hearing is, well, they're gonna take my taxes and put it in. So I'm just passing that on, that's what I hear in coffee shops. So that's why I'm saying, if it doesn't specifically say tax money would be used towards this, I think people would appreciate seeing that, right?
I think if tax money was gonna be put in it, that would have to go through town meeting to be appropriated.
Oh, well, I mean, that's, I get, that's-
You know what I mean? It's on a budget item that we would, that would have to go that way. But essentially, we can do that with all tax- But, but essentially, we can do that with all tax money. We can move it around with town meeting. The funding sources from the outside, I think we've identified are the inclusionary zoning, the potential to get grants because we can't, because we don't have this sort of trust set up, or the potential to randomly donate to. So I, I think what it's, you know, as far as us moving our town meeting money around, town meeting always has the right to move that money around. And that's not going to change for this or anything.
And Section A under 29-4 does actually go into a fair amount of detail in terms of sources of funds. It even does mention appropriation by town meeting. Jim, town meeting, if, if town meeting were to appropriate money into the trust, would that be a two-thirds vote? Or would that be a simple majority?
Depends on what kind of appropriation, if it's a simple free cash or something.
It would be a simple majority, yeah, okay.
Put out borrow.
Yeah, then it'd be a two-thirds. Okay, got it. Okay.
Jim?
Yeah, John?
Your idea about capital budget, why wouldn't, I mean, town departments operate with the capital budget. Why wouldn't you have a review of capital budget committee of items that are over $5,000, $8,000? That would be.
What's our view of that?
A degree of surety and security for the community, because now things are being, you know, watched after.
Well, I think the capital budget committee only meets a few times a year. And I think the select board having, you know, the fiduciary responsibility for the town and meeting regularly, and frankly, being probably the most plugged in about, we would hope, about the needs of the town, they just seem like the natural body. But again, capital budget as a committee, I think of as usually reviewing town meeting appropriations and the capital budget schedule through town meeting. Versus again, this could have a quicker reaction time.
Well, we have a planning cycle, which is imposed on every department. If it's a capital purchase, it's supposed to be on the schedule and they meet enough times a year to.
Just to follow up on that.
Same types of things you'd be purchasing.
It would require, so let's say that the trust came forward and whoever's the chairperson, they said to the select board, listen, we'd like $50,000 as a starter. To go back to Mr. Damon's request, you know, we'd like to ask for $50,000 for free cash appropriated. I think then it would trigger a capital request, a review and say, well, where does it stand in the plan? Why is it necessary? Why does the select board feel that it's necessary? So if it goes before town meeting, it would, would, I, I wouldn't see why it wouldn't go before capital.
If money is coming from the budget?
Yeah.
I think you got to look at it kind of like the, the Kendall Fund. It's set aside funds that have been sitting out there forever. And town meeting doesn't appropriate that money. When, when it comes time for a use of that funds, it's restricted as to its use. And it comes before the Board of Selectmen and they say, yes, we agree with your use, you can expend the funds. So that's kind of what this trust is being set up to do is dedicated funds that did not come from the town. They were received from developers and so forth and for the purpose of affordable housing and, and growing the affordable housing product. So those funds have been set aside from private sources. And the Board of Selectmen can approve or deny the expenditure of those funds, whether they deem it's inside the scope of the charge.
And it's also allowing us outside money to take care of our properties.
And, and just to follow up on Mr. Damon's question, which I think is a good question. I, I wouldn't think that we need to write the bylaw, to Ben's point, to like specify that the sources of incoming revenue. But it's a good question in, in what Nancy just alluded to in terms of grants and outside money. One option beyond, you know, we mentioned payment in lieu, we mentioned CPA, we mentioned federal HUD grants. But one option, I would hope, is the governor has a housing choices bill. Governor Baker has a housing choices bill that would essentially increase the amount of grants that towns have that are building more, more housing. So i- if you're building, if you're increasing your housing supply in a responsible way to solve this housing crisis that he's identified, that you'll get a grant. Well, that's a great example of a kind of funding source. That doesn't even exist yet. Like that's still pending legislation. But so it's things that we, in other words, to answer your question, it's things that we don't even know exist that may not exist right now, but could exist in five years, 10 years, and that'll be a future funding source.
So let me go back out. Any other questions from people in the room? Joe, you always have questions.
No, I'm, I've been per-dogged.
Very helpful, very helpful.
A lot of my issues were resolved there. Going back to the question, Jim, that you asked, like how much money could ever be in this fund? I think Andrew had invited Brookline, somebody from the Brookline Housing Trust to come over and speak at one of the meetings. And correct me if I'm wrong, I think she said that at no given point in time, and they had a trust long before the state developed the law for a trust. I think she said that at no time they had more than $200,000 in the trust, if I'm, if I recall correctly.
I think they have more than that. And they, they started, I think, at the late 90s and they get a cash payment every year.
I believe they put $200,000 in it every year.
Okay, that's what I saw.
Here's what that 200 was, yeah. Obviously a different.
Well, no, we weren't talking, I don't think we were ever talking billions of dollars at that point.
And what I heard was just going back over the building permits and thinking about the payment in lieu was, you said, $112,000, which is not a lot of money. So, you know, and that doesn't mean there couldn't be other, under other sources, but it, it doesn't appear to be as though this is going to turn into a, a large pot. Also, you would expect that it wouldn't be building up. You'd expect that it would actually being, being used for the reasons that it's there, right? And heck knows, we have plenty of opportunities to do that even today.
Yeah.
If, if we, if we had that in place. So I, I, I don't think it would be building up over, over time to any huge number based on everything I'm hearing. John?
One unit, one unit purchase would be $420,000. I think Brookline is going to be over $1 million in the account. And I, I think that for transparency purposes, the Kendall Fund isn't a good example, because everyone's always asking.
So, but, but let's stop there, just because, because I know Ashley did that, did the math, so.
So to be clear, my, my math was based on pro-rata fees, which are, so if you're doing the math and you get to, oh, you need to do 4.2 units, you would, you would round down. And then we're, we're leaving that 0.2 unit on, on the table essentially. So your fee would be based on what's left on the table. So we want to capture that. The, if you, so the way that the language is written is to strongly deter in lieu fees for an entire unit, because the goal is to produce units commensurate with the market rate unit. So you really don't, in case of extreme situations or something very unique is happening, you don't want to accept that in lieu fee, because you're never going to be able to build that unit for what it's going to cost the developer to build as part of their thing. There is, the ZBA does have the ability to accept that. But it's, the, the language is, I think, very strong to discourage that.
Just to read it, under Section 7D, an equivalent fee in lieu of whole units may be made, but is strongly discouraged. And then it goes on to specify how the ZBA in its discretion can accept or reject that. The $450,000 number is intentionally high to discourage people from paying the payment in lieu. And so in other words, to Ashley's point, that will never, you know, getting that money to replicate and build a single affordable unit is never going to be as cheap as having it be built already as part of the project.
Yeah, that makes sense. Does that make sense to you, John?
I understand the motive, but my point is if there's that kind of money in that account, I think for transparency purposes, there should be a review of the capital budget committee, of the expenditures, because they're doing the same types of things. They're buying buildings, they're entering into acquisitions of hundreds of thousands of dollars and that should be reviewed.
So the select board would review anything over $15,000, just to be clear.
But we usually do it with the capital budget committee.
Yeah, I think that the, 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 the point was that the capital budget committee doesn't meet often enough, town meeting doesn't meet often, often enough. Whereas the, the select board meets on a very frequent basis. And, you know, we would be able to then, you know, make the, the judgments. I, I would assume that if it was something very big, we would seek advice from, you know, department heads, perhaps capital budget, perhaps FinCom, who knows? That we would ask questions more broadly than, you know, than just the, the five of us on the board. So I, I, I'm actually comfortable with that, given the, the, the speed with which the, the, these things would need to be moving, John.
And is this consistent with other communities?
So, yeah, I, I would say so. Everyone's a little bit different, right? But I'd say that.
I would say it is 80% of the tax, 90% of the tax is consistent with just the state statute, which is just applies to every community. But where it's been tailored for Walpole has come from feedback, from frankly, Mr. Maraski, who I'll jokingly call him the loyal opposition, but it's not even that he's the opposition. He's, he's made this by law better, and so have you all.
I mean, who, the, over, what did you say, 12,000? And then the, going to the select board, is that consistent with other communities?
Oh, in my understanding, it's more stringent than other communities.
Okay.
So I, I've, I've seen other housing trusts that have oversight requirements, but I've also seen some, a lot that don't, that don't.
And their oversight, is it usually the select board? Or could it be a mayor? Because if that's how they do it.
City Council, mayor, or something like that.
Right, okay.
But, but again, that's what I was building up towards, is that we got all this feedback from people like Joe and you saying, this seems too autonomous for Walpole's style. And we said, okay, let's include this $15,000 trigger that requires your approval. That is not, to answer your question, Nancy, that's not.
You, you did answer the question. That is what I'm looking for, that it is an extra safeguard and it is a good thing.
Yes, it is, for sure, yeah.
I do want to come back to, because I stopped John short so we could go back on the math. You were about to point out or make a point about the Kendall Fund and how you didn't see that this is equivalent. So I wanted to come back and allow you to make that point, because I sort of stopped you.
No, I mean, I, I just would say again, all the operating departments, Jim does a lot of construction. He's building a recreation center field now. He's able to do that within the constructs of our review of finance committee and capital budget committees. So I think there wouldn't be any reason why.
And town meeting.
Expenditures of this amount of money on behalf of the committee wouldn't be reviewed by the same two groups or one, one of the groups anyway.
But I hear the point, but it is a different, it's a different funding mechanism. You got, you know, taxpayer money on the one hand, not on the other.
We fit in the police department, the fire department, the DPW, all the different.
No, I, I get, I get the point you're making. I, I, but I also hear, I also hear the point that, that Andrew and company are making here in terms of the need to move more quickly. So I'm, I'm not uncomfortable with that.
And if I could just add, there's, the housing production plan is going to set out your priorities. And there's, you know, going to be an update every year on what the goals are. So I'd imagine that any of those funds would go to serve those purposes.
That's a fair point.
Right. I would be uncomfortable if the trust was managing the trust.
I agree with that, too.
That I would be uncomfortable with. I feel like as there are other reviews through town, as we go through a whole budget process, the review for the trust will go to the Board of Selectmen, select board.
I would also jump in and just say, I, I think John's example was extreme. But if, if $400,000 is rolling in periodically and we get up over a million bucks a year, at that point, I would want to see more oversight. I, I don't think we're ever going to get there. I think that was an extreme example. But if, if money really is rolling in in a big way, then maybe we want to rethink that. But for now, I, I think this is a, a really good plan as it exists for what we're likely to get in, in payment in lieu and the fractionals, so.
Yeah, I'm actually got three questions. First is just from a mechanic standpoint, the funds are going to be controlled by an account through town hall, correct, Jim?
Yes, through the finance division, I would think.
So there's not going to be a checkbook that the trust is going to have to sign checks for $5,000. They still have to come to town hall and says, we've got a PO for this, can you fund it?
Jody would verify it, the finance treasurer, tax collector, whoever that is, so yeah.
So, so there's definitely a separation of cash responsibilities outside the trust. Second is, under 29-9 of the trust, status of trust for various purposes. It says that it's a public employer. Does that mean if the trust does go forward with a renovation project, that the prevailing wage laws would apply to that project too? Because they are considered a public employer?
Yes, because.
Shoot it from the hip, I'd say, yeah, so.
You have to, and not only that, but you have to go through the same procurement process. You have to have open meeting law. It's all the whole shebang, as you would have for a town board.
And that's just state statute.
That's just the requirement.
Yep.
All right. And the third item was with regards to the audit. I mean, the Board of Selectmen can put whatever extra detail they want to be incorporated into that audit. They could have a, in addition to just generic financial statements, a status of assets held by the trust. We have 34 acres put aside for the next developer who wants to come in and says, we've got these acres, develop these, don't touch those, and you make a deal. That kind of information can be incorporated into that audit of physical assets in the way of real estate, buildings, cash and so forth, outlined in there. And it'll be available online, you can have copies at town meeting, so people can see exactly what the trust is up to and the, the activity they've been involved in.
And I would expect that level of transparency in the audit. So, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I just want to make a point off of what Mark just said about, you know, the, his first point, which was the trust won't have a checkbook and won't be just cutting checks by themselves. It has to go through the process, it'll go through Jody, who will then cut a check. Well, before that check can be cut, you need a majority of the trustees to vote for that check to be cut. So there's four more, four people who are going to have to approve that. And then if it's over $15,000, you're going to need three out of five, all in a public hearing, to make that approval.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's pretty transparent.
Yeah, I think you're right, Joe. Nancy?
I just have some questions about the makeup. So you have a selectman?
Yes.
Select person? And then for the housing authority? What is your thought? Why is that, why are they appointing the non-voting? Is that what you mean?
So, so this, I, I should clarify.
Yeah.
The, the Board of Trustees of the Walpole House, Affordable Housing Trust Fund has eight members. Seven get to vote, one is a non-voting ex officio member from the Walpole Housing Authority. We carry that over because the current housing partnership has this similar structure. We have appointed members by the select board, and then we have Denise Landry, the executive director of the WHA, who comes to our meetings. So rather than specify that it's the executive director of the WHA, it's just someone from there. Just to have their influence because of, you know, it's common that rehabilitating their, their units may be an outcome. That, yeah, so, does that address your question?
Yeah, so a, a select person, and then how about on top of her being the?
Non-voting, yeah.
The non-voting, what about a Walpole housing member?
So that's a great point.
Housing authority member.
So, so of the six others that are voting from, that, that make up the board, at least three are at-large residents that have the relevant experience. We talked about earlier in real estate, affordable housing banking, blah, 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 blah. So that's three at-large members. And then it says, priority shall be given to residents of affordable housing units. And then, and then it talks about the terms. So priority, meaning that, we didn't want to, you know, handcuff you, the select board, in appointing these people, that you have to appoint this person because they live in affordable housing, use it?
I meant somebody on the housing authority.
On, on the board of the housing authority?
On the board, yes.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Oh, 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 so, so the housing authority could send nominations to the select board of people that they should, that you may want to consider to appoint. And they could include someone from their board. But there's no requirement that there, there be someone, a voting member from the WHA.
I just thought, I'm, I'm just thinking that I think it would be a good representation.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, should there be?
So we went back and forth on this, because for a while, earlier drafts, Ben's laughing here, because earlier drafts said, oh, we should have one person from the select board. Oh, yeah, why not one person from the planning board? And having all these requirements, we said, you know what? Let's have one person from the select board. And then it's, read the sentence, it says, "The Board of Selectmen shall request nominations from town boards and committees and may consider any such nominations." So in other words, finance committee, planning board, the housing board of directors of the WHA, all of these different relevant committees can nominate people. And you should, and that would carry extra weight, I presume? And, but you're the ultimate decider of those six other.
In fact, it requires us to ask them to nominate people.
Yeah, excuse me, it requires you to ask. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to, you know, tie our hands too close.
We have trouble staffing, staffing committees as it is, right?
As it is, yeah. I would like to add a veteran. Like I just think that a lot of affordable housing, a lot of disabled veterans, and there are so many of them, and we talk about those are projected numbers, for people that are going to be. projected numbers, for people that are going to be looking for this kind of housing, that I think a veteran on this committee could be very insightful and important.
Do you want to make it a requirement, or give them a preference? You know what I mean?
I'd really actually like them to be a requirement. I think they just add something that, a different point of view, that, you know, banking, finance, architecture, law, landscape, and veterans are everybody, you know, they can be anybody. But I think that they add a different component to this sort of--
So what if you, what if we amended the sentence, and I'm sorry, it's kind of, under 29-3, it says, priority shall be given to residents of affordable housing units, and we amended it to, or veterans. In other words, and/or veterans. Get, priority shall be given to residents of affordable housing units and/or veterans.
If you make it a requirement, you could find that you have a vacancy that doesn't get filled for a while, because you haven't tracked down a veteran.
In other words, to reflect your point, like, let's give priority to veterans, to serve on this.
And we could--
What?
Veterans is here, we could ask--
Oh, yeah, the veterans' agent could, we could ask them to nominate someone.
I'm more of a mind to include it as a preference, and specifically because we do sometimes have trouble filling--
Yeah. No, I'm good with priority. Priority shall be given to residents of affordable housing units and veterans.
Yeah, that, that works, yeah.
And I think it sends a message that we want them to be included.
Include that in the motion, then.
Yeah, because the warrant's already done, so. But I think it's a good add, and, but it doesn't tie us up to Andrew's point. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I would just, oh, sorry, go ahead. Sorry, I thought you wanted to speak, so--
I get some, I can probably ask Andrew after we just--
Okay. I just wanted to say, thanks to the Board, the group that's been working on this. I think you've come a long way. And just speaking for myself, I had some concerns as to, you know, what I was hearing from outside people, and I appreciate that you listened to us and some of our early feedback, and Joe and others, and have tried to Walpolize it to the extent that you can. And I think that's important, that we get an affordable housing plan, inclusionary zoning, that can work in Walpole. And I think you've come a long way, and I think you have one, so just wanted to say that.
And I would just like to reciprocate the thanks. I tried to say it earlier as maybe a poorly worded joke, but there's lots of individuals that have changed this. It's not only you three, I mean, Ben's already on the committee, but Nancy, Jim, and Mark, but it's people like Joe, it's people, Joe Maraski, it's people on the planning board, Katie Beatty, John O'Leary come to mind, obviously Phil, Sarah Kati has been huge. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is, we've come a long way because we've been open-minded, and you've all made a lot of great suggestions. So it's been a team effort.
Over the last year and a half, so.
Yeah, I mean, this has been a long journey, and is a long way to go yet, to Ben's earlier point. So, yeah, so thank you for the great work that you and the committee have done. I also want to thank those who were in the room here tonight for your participation and involvement. It is really helpful to get as many perspectives as you possibly can. And again, I would reiterate that as we get ready to go to town meeting, I think we should have further discussion on some of these items, particularly as questions come up, and they will. And we need to make sure that we follow the separate fact and fiction, and follow up on those items that I suggested earlier, I won't repeat them now. But I thought a really, a really good and helpful meeting from my perspective, so thank you to everybody. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, 300. We're now adjourned.